So I think that the other thing I would point out is we have a brand-new building on the corner. The corner building of that, the premier real estate, has been vacant now for a year and a half, or maybe even two years. There's a second office that's vacant in there as well. There's a third one that has only been occupied by a squatter that basically sells antiques every now and then. There's a number of vacancies over around the corner towards Custard. So in my mind, to kind of pick and choose what seems to be a super-promising business and to move it into our neighborhood when we've been struggling to fill some of those spaces, to me, seems problematic. So that was what I would say.
Thank you, sir. Next person? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joe Clarky. I am married to Terry Verag, who's part of the owners of the Verag Building LLC, along with her brother and his wife. And so I would like to support Dr. Currie as well. And I don't know if I could say it any better than my friend at Sketchbook really did. You know, we have an Evanston resident who's trying to come in and bring this space to life. It has been vacant for seven months plus, without any serious interest at all as far as retail. But I think we have to make sure that we think about retail in a broader sense, and that there is some retail to Dr. Currie's business. But he's talking about bringing 30 to 40 people into the neighborhood every day. And in my experience, when people shop, is when they're out, they're on an errand, they're saying, "I'm going to be at the chiropractor at 2:30 on Wednesday, so that's when I'll go and get my watch fixed, or I'll pick up some wine, or I'll go to the rock shop, or maybe I'll bring my daughter," whatever. I think that it only enhances the retail district to have somebody like him there that brings people in on a regular basis every day, day after day, week after week, for appointments and that sort of thing. So I would like to speak in favor of Dr. Currie and his business in terms of enhancing the retail district and not just... We shouldn't look at it as, "Oh, he's not retail," because I think that one of the speakers said, "It's an office." Well, it's not really an office where somebody goes and sits and sits behind a desk. It's a business what brings people in every half hour, every hour, a lot of traffic to the area. So I think it would really enhance the businesses around it in a way that other options that are in there haven't been any other options. And I think that that's important to think about, too, in terms of the alternatives, have this vacant for another, who knows, and then try to get somebody in. And he wants to bring this space to life, and I'd like to support him in that.
Thank you, sir. Next person? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joe Clarky. I am married to Terry Verag, who's part of the owners of the Verag Building LLC, along with her brother and his wife. And so I would like to support Dr. Currie as well. And I don't know if I could say it any better than my friend at Sketchbook really did. You know, we have an Evanston resident who's trying to come in and bring this space to life. It has been vacant for seven months plus, without any serious interest at all as far as retail. But I think we have to make sure that we think about retail in a broader sense, and that there is some retail to Dr. Currie's business. But he's talking about bringing 30 to 40 people into the neighborhood every day. And in my experience, when people shop, is when they're out, they're on an errand, they're saying, "I'm going to be at the chiropractor at 2:30 on Wednesday, so that's when I'll go and get my watch fixed, or I'll pick up some wine, or I'll go to the rock shop, or maybe I'll bring my daughter," whatever. I think that it only enhances the retail district to have somebody like him there that brings people in on a regular basis every day, day after day, week after week, for appointments and that sort of thing. So I would like to speak in favor of Dr. Currie and his business in terms of enhancing the retail district and not just... We shouldn't look at it as, "Oh, he's not retail," because I think that one of the speakers said, "It's an office." Well, it's not really an office where somebody goes and sits and sits behind a desk. It's a business what brings people in every half hour, every hour, a lot of traffic to the area. So I think it would really enhance the businesses around it in a way that other options that are in there haven't been any other options. And I think that that's important to think about, too, in terms of the alternatives, have this vacant for another, who knows, and then try to get somebody in. And he wants to bring this space to life, and I'd like to support him in that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Since we have so many people that want to speak, I want you to ask you to limit your comments to three minutes, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Usana Ali. I'm with the Standard Rock Shop. And we actually did the move from one side of the street... I'm sorry, I have braces on. I did the move from one side of the street to the other. And one thing we encountered when we moved to the other side of the street, because we're a retail business, we need to have storage. We needed to have storage in our basement, because we can't afford to have retail space and storage space on the first floor. And I talked to Terry the other day, and I said, "Terry, you're not going to hate me for this, are you?" But I said to her, "For us, there was water in the basement when we moved across the street. We spent a lot of money, along with our landlord, to make it a dry basement. You cannot rent out to retail space if you don't have a dry basement. They don't have a dry basement, and I know that's really hard to spend money on. I also know that our old landlord, not older landlord, Alan Price, is sitting here. And I know how hard he fought to get Diane in as the wine goddess, and how long he held out to get that in as a good tenant. And when it was time to rent out our space, there had to be a lot of construction done, because we'd used it pretty hard. And he put the money into it, and we have a vibrant space over there now. I think when you've had a long-term tenant... I also do commercial real estate on the side. When you have a long-term tenant, you have to put some money into the space. And if you want a retail space, you have to have storage for them downstairs, otherwise we can't afford to have our storage on the expensive retail part of it. So I talked to Terry about that the other day. And I know it's hard to have vacant space, but I also know that if we let this tenant go in, and I know about other people on the block who's considering moving out, it sets a precedence that we become a service street and we don't become a retail street. And that's what I'm nervous about, because we've had a stake there now. We've been at Evanston for 48 years. Dave is my brother-in-law. And I just really want to have it remain a retail-oriented street, and we do need more foot traffic. I don't know that when you go to a chiropractor, you actually go shopping afterward. I normally go and I hide, because I have no makeup on, I'm sweaty, I've been working out, I do whatever they do to me. And I hurry up and I go home and take a shower. So that's all I have to say. So I wish you would vote against it, and I'm sorry, Terry. But I just feel like if we get together as neighbors, maybe we can help each other find somebody who would complement the rest of us on the street, because we have a big stake in what we did when we moved across the street. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cesar Marin. I live on 1630 Madison Street. Been in Evanston for about 10 years. I'm one of the other owners of Sketchbook Brewing Company. I'm wearing the shirt right here. I agree with everything that Sean Decker mentioned and the talk before the previous one about the space and the proposed use of the space, where the office would bring about 30 to 40 people, if not more, a week. As a retail business also in the area, what we want more and more is new people in the area that are repeat customers. I've known Sean Currie for probably about eight years now. I'm not one of his clients, because I do not want to go to the city for it. So if I need an adjustment, I tell him, "Come, adjust me," or I go to his house. If he's on Main Street, I will probably go there. And that's how it goes for most of my shopping. If it's convenient, I'll do it. If it's not, I'll go to Amazon. So I think a mixed use, having a more mixed use on Main Street will help. I think it will bring people... As I understand, a lot of his clients are repeat clients. They don't come in once every six months or once a year. They need adjustments. They come in once every two weeks. So what I think it would bring to the area are new people that will find other businesses in the area that they have no idea. We have countless numbers of people that come to Sketchbook every week and say, "I had no idea you were here." And how did they get there? Right? They get there because they came to the eye doctor, because they came to Dave's Rock Shop, because they were on a field trip with their kids. And they realize... Because they come to the dentist next door to us. And they realize that we are there. They don't even see the signs. So the whole talk about having a presence, it's great when people walk, but when people drive, they miss it. We have signs, they don't see it. So I'm completely for the proposed use. And I also want to say that for those who mentioned that they're retail-oriented, and I've tried to shop in many areas, and usually if I'm at work until 5:30, 6 o'clock, if you're not open after 6 o'clock, sorry, I can't shop there. So I think we need to look into that as well. Not too long ago, I think a lot of people were against developing the parking lot into retail. So I feel like there's a little conflict there. Talking about the parking lot next door to one of the tenants there. So again, I'm for the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, three minutes.
Hello, my name is Mike Noonan. I live at 1440
So I think that the other thing I would point out is we have a brand-new building on the corner. The corner building of that, the premier real estate, has been vacant now for a year and a half, or maybe even two years. There's a second office that's vacant in there as well. There's a third one that has only been occupied by a, you know, a squatter that basically sells antiques every now and then. There's a number of vacancies over around the corner towards Custer. So in my mind, to kind of, you know, pick and choose a what seems to be a super-promising business and to move it into our neighborhood when we've been struggling to fill some of those spaces, to me, seems problematic. So that was what I would say.
Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Next person. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joe Klowke. I am married to Terry Verag, who's part of the owners of the Verag Building LLC, along with her brother and his wife. And so I would like to support Dr. Curry as well, and I don't know if I could say it any better than my friend at Sketchbook really did. You know, we have an Evanston resident who's trying to come in and bring this space to life. It has been vacant for seven months plus, without any serious interest at all, as far as retail. But I think we have to, you know, make sure that we think about retail in a broader sense, is it, and that there is some retail to Dr. Curry's business. But he's talking about bringing 30 to 40 people into the neighborhood every day, and in my experience, you know, when people shop is when they're out, they're on an errand, they're saying, "I'm gonna be at the chiropractor at 2:30 on Wednesday, so that's when I'll go and get my watch fixed, or I'll pick up some wine, or I'll, you know, go to the rock shop, or maybe I'll bring my daughter," whatever. I think that it only enhances the retail district to have somebody like him there that brings people in on a regular basis every day, you know, day after day, week after week, for appointments and that sort of thing. So I would like to speak in favor of Dr. Curry and his business in terms of enhancing the retail district and not just, you know, we shouldn't look at it as, oh, he's not retail, because I think that one of the speakers said, "It's an office." Well, it's not really an office where somebody goes and sits and sits behind a desk. It's a business what brings people in every half hour, every hour, a lot of traffic to the area, so I think it would really enhance the businesses around it in a way that, you know, other options that are in there haven't been any other options, and I think that that's important to think about, too, in terms of the alternatives, have this vacant for another, who knows, and then try to get somebody in. And it's, he wants to bring this space to life, and I'd like to support him in that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Since we have so many people that want to speak, I want you to ask you to limit your comments to three minutes, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Usana Ali. I'm with Dave Sound Earth Rock Shop. And we actually did the move from one side of the street, I'm sorry, I have braces in. I did the move from one side of the street to the other. And one thing we encountered when we moved to the other side of the street, because we're retail business, we want, we need to have storage. We needed to have storage in our basement, because we can't afford to have retail space and storage space on the first floor. And I talked to Terry the other day, and I said, "Terry, you're not gonna hate me for this, are you?" But I said to her, "For us, there was water in the basement when we moved across the street. We spent a lot of money, along with our landlord, to make it a dry basement. You cannot rent out to retail space if you don't have a dry basement. They don't have a dry basement, and I know that's really hard to spend money on. I also know that our old landlord, not old, older landlord, Alan Price, is sitting here, and I know how hard he fought to get Diane in as the Wine Goddess, and how long he held out to get that in as a good tenant. And when it was time to rent out our space, there had to be some, a lot of construction done, because we'd used it pretty hard. And he put the money into it, and we have a vibrant space over there now. I think when you've had a long-term tenant, I also do commercial real estate on the side, when you have a long-term tenant, you have to put some money into the space. And if you want a retail space, you have to have storage for them downstairs. Otherwise, we can't afford to have our storage on the expensive retail part of it. So I talked to Terry about that the other day, and I just, I know it's hard to have vacant space, but I also know that if we let this tenant go in, and I know about other people on the block who's considering moving out, it sets a precedence that we become a service street and we don't become a retail street. And that's what I'm nervous about, because we've had a stake there now. We've been in Evanston for 48 years. Dave is my brother-in-law. And, you know, I just really wanna have it remain a retail-oriented street, and we do need more foot traffic. I don't know that then, when you go to a chiropractor, you actually go shopping afterward. I normally go and I hide, because I have no makeup on, I'm sweaty, I've been working out or do whatever they do to me, and I hurry up and I go home and take a shower. So that's all I have to say, so I wish you would vote against it, and I'm sorry, Terry. But I just feel like if we get together as neighbors, maybe we can help each other find somebody who would complement the rest of us on the street, because we have a big stake in what we did when we moved across the street. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Caesar Marin. I live on 1630 Madison Street. Been in Evanston for about 10 years. I'm one of the other owners of Sketchbook Brewing Company. I'm wearing the shirt right here. Agree with everything that Sean Decker mentioned and the previous, the talk before the previous one, about the space and then the proposed use of the space, where the office would bring about 30 to 40 people, if not more, a week. As a business, a retail business also in the area, what we want more and more is new people in the area that are repeat customers. I've known Sean Curry for probably about eight years now. I've, I'm not one of his clients, because I do not want to go to the city for it. So if I need an adjustment, I tell him, "Come, adjust me," or I go to his house. If he's on Main Street, I will probably go there. And that's how it goes for most of my shopping. If it's convenient, I'll do it. If it's not, I'll go to Amazon. So I think a mixed use, having a more, you know, mixed use on Main Street will help. I think it will bring people, as I understand, a lot of his clients are repeat clients. They don't come in once every six months or once a year. They need adjustments, they come in once every two weeks. So what I think it would bring to the area are new people that will find other businesses in the area that they have no idea. We have countless numbers of people that come to Sketchbook every week and say, "I had no idea you were here." And how did they get there? Right? They get there because they came to the eye doctor, or because they came to Dave's Rock Shop, because they were on a field trip with their kids, and they realize, because they come to the dentist next door to us, and they realize that we are there. They don't even see the signs. So the whole talk about having a presence, it's great when people walk, but when people drive, they miss it. We have signs, they don't see it. So I'm completely forward, you know, for the proposed use. And I also want to say that for those who mentioned that, you know, they're retail-oriented, and I've tried to shop in many areas, and usually if I'm at work until 5:30, 6 o'clock, if you're not open after 6 o'clock, sorry, I can't shop there. So I think we need to look into that as well. Not too long ago, I think a lot of people were against developing the parking lot into retail, so I feel like there's a little conflict there.
Thank you, sir.
Talking about the parking lot next door to one of the tenants there, so, again, I'm for the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, three minutes.
Hello, my name is Mike Noonan. I live at 1440 West Flornoy Street in Chicago. I am a zoning attorney by profession, but I am here as a patient of Dr. Curry's. So as a zoning attorney, I go to a lot of meetings like this. I'm happy to be at one off the clock, and I'm also very familiar with a lot of the issues being raised by different speakers, such as the impact of retail overlay districts on the challenging landscape of retail, whether people should sacrifice a Main Street retail feel for vacant spaces, but I'm not gonna solve that in my three minutes. I just sort of want to tell you about my experience being one of Dr. Curry's patients at his current downtown practice. For a while, I would see Dr. Curry on Saturdays. I would come into his office, get adjusted, I would go across the street to the coffee shop, I would pull out my computer and work. I would buy coffee and eat a donut, and I'd walk around the area and sometimes go shopping, sometimes sit at a park, I'd kind of see what's around. And that was my every other Saturday for quite a few months until I started seeing him during the week. And I came up here tonight from Chicago, rode the Purple Line. I intend to come up to see Dr. Curry when he moves, maybe not always taking the Purple Line, maybe taking the Metro. I know it's a nice bike ride up from the city during the summer, but I will find a way, and I would like you to support his project and recommend him for the next step. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, three minutes, please.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Redditt Kokave. I live in 923 Ridge Court. I'm fortunate enough to be a neighbor of Dr. Curry. I just want to say, as a rheumatologist, I refer multiple patients to a chiropractor, and I have no doubt that Dr. Curry will be able to build up the practice very quickly. Being a neighbor was, is good. We get free service. I've seen his work, he's very talented and gifted, works both with adult and kids, so I'm here to fully support him, and I'm sure he's gonna be great once he starts.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm an attorney by profession, and I-
Your name, sir?
Ehsan F. Tagari. And I'm a tenant of Verag's, and I'm at 701 Main Street, right above the space we're talking about. Seven or eight months ago, I was the one who was supposed to move into that space, so I do have a little bit of personal attachment to that space. And when I decided, because of the zoning issue, not to do it, you know, I always think it was regretful. When I heard that Dr. Curry is moving in, I don't know him personally, but I'm a personal injury and workers' comp lawyer. His business fits right with my business, we're seven, eight lawyers on the second floor. The Athletico across the street, if you have walked there, you'll see a buzzing business there. If you walk to the Wellness Center, you'll see a buzzing business there. So it's a misconception that if you're a chiropractor, you're not going to have people come and go. That's just, it makes no sense. And as you heard, 30 or 40 people per day, that's a lot of people per day. And I think just for the neighborhood to buzz better in happiness, I think all of us should get the maintenance on a weekly basis from Dr. Curry. I think that's one of the problems, and everybody's so uptight. So I know that all the attorneys, on a regular basis, because we live and work in a very stressful situation, we will use his services. As I said, I don't know him, and I met him just today, but I think you should give him the benefit of the doubt. He will bring the badly-needed business to that location. One last thing for the last minute. I've been at 701 Main Street, second floor, for nine years. I've seen businesses come and go. The optometrist that you were talking about, previous to that, I believe was a cutlery, didn't survive. Next to it was a toy store, didn't survive. So instead of having to tenant, I mean landlords such as Verag, to keep suffering and not giving an opportunity to those businesses that are not retail, or some are partly retail, I think the focus should be why these businesses aren't surviving. It's not the retail, because they were retails. If, 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 if the only reason to have a retail is to survive, then they would have survived. So I think you should have to look elsewhere to see how beneficial these professional offices will be, and I think they'll bring a perspective to Main Street that maybe it has never been allowed to. So I fully support him, and I hope you give him the benefit of the doubt. You know, if I was here, I don't think I would have clients come here and vouch for me, so I'm so shocked and surprised that our, his friends and clients have traveled and they're supporting him. That speaks volume of the guy and the business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. James Ali, owner of Dave's Under Earth Rock Shop in Evanston. And I was on the fence about this. I heard both sides, you know, we should make it all retail. Other people say, "Is it gonna be a service-oriented area?" And I started thinking, you know, we already have the Athletico, we have the Wellness Center. I now hear that the main building that went up on Chicago and Main Street, the big building that just went up, that might be a urgent care center. So I am leaning more towards that I wish you would vote against this. No offense, you seem to be a very nice man. Your patients come up to, you know, support you, but this has nothing to do with that. You know, you might be the best chiropractor in the universe, but this doesn't have anything to do with that. This is about how we want to see Main Street look and how we want it to progress. Personally, I would like to see a retail business there, and if that means that, you know, it takes a little longer, and if some money has to go into fixing that basement and fixing the water system so that there can be storage down there, so a retail business can come in there and have a place to put their goods, you know, that sometimes is the bullet someone has to bite. The store that we went into, 7-Eleven Main Street, that sat empty for almost two years. And we could have gone anywhere. We could have gone to Wilmette, we could have gone to Kenilworth, we could have gone to Glencoe, we could have gone anywhere. And we know that our client base would have followed us. But we chose to stay in Evanston, and we chose to stay on Main Street because it was becoming a more vibrant retail community. That's what I would like to see. I have, once again, this is nothing against you, I know, we barely know each other, you seem like a very nice man and very capable, but in my eyes, I think that's how I would like to see our block continue to be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Alan Price, and I own, and my family owns property on the 700 block of Main Street. We own La Princesa, the Wine Goddess, Cultivate, and Trattoria DOC. And several years ago, we had a wellness and chiropractic practice above Trattoria DOC, which unfortunately didn't last long. I'm not saying that that would be the case with Kurt's, is it Kurt? I'm sorry.
Shaw.
Shaw, with Shaw's practice, but it, there seems to be, you know, an abundance of places like that in the neighborhood. But that's not why I'm talking. I'm really conflicted about this whole matter, because I know how difficult it is to find good tenants for retail space, and I know how long that space has been vacant. And we are loyal customers of the Verags, and we want them to be successful in renting it. And in fact, we have talked about maybe pitching in and trying to find tenants ourselves for them, which is the approach that we have taken, rather than hiring a Realtor, going out and finding people that might have an interest in moving into that space. That's a very strategic space. If that space becomes more of a service provider rather than a retailer, it changes the whole character of that side. And it's a good thing that Evanston Lumber did move out, because I don't think they really enhanced the retail flavor of that street. I'm not even sure of how much street traffic. What we want is, is not just traffic, but shopping traffic, traffic where people are gonna browse as well as carry on their business. And I don't know how many of you go shopping after you've visited your dentist, or chiropractor, or physician, but in my case, recently, I went to a place like that, and I was very eager to get back to my office after visiting. It's just a matter of fitting it into a very tight schedule. Now, I've talked to my tenants, my commercial tenants on the street, and none of them are really in favor of having a chiropractic or medical kind of practice across the street, because they did not feel that it would build street traffic, traffic of shoppers. That's their main concern. They want to have people who are on the street to buy, not to just buy in various places, rather than going to a particular service facility. The other thing that concerns me is if this zone has changed to allow them, and what would be, what would be the effect if this business failed? Would that, would that rezoning of that space persist after that failure? And would it then become office or a near-office space for the near future? Or would it go back to a restricted area, which would only be for retailers in the future? And that's, that's a concern.
You have 30 seconds, Mr. Price.
Is that enough? Thank you.
Thank you.
You have 30 more seconds?
You have 30 seconds, sir.
I think I've covered all the, all the important parts.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Terry Verag Klowke, and I'm in the, I'm the little role of being the landlord and also part of retail on Main Street, because we have Verag Jewelers. The reason why I feel very strongly about this is that we have really tried hard to find a tenant there, and retail, as you know, across the board is suffering. And I personally, and along with the prices, I've appreciated their help, have contacted many, many potential retailers to go in there. Ice Cream Parlors seems to be the one that everyone's kind of hoping to go in there, but no one's jumping on board. Anyway, I just want to add that we do have a basement, and it is a dry basement, and it is potentially, can be renovated to accommodate supplies down there. So that's not an issue with us renting it to retail, so I wanted to clarify that. That said, I hope that you can possibly look beyond that he, Sean, is just a chiropractor and recognize that he will be bringing in so much foot traffic into the area, and us as the jewelry store would so benefit from that, because as previously, Evanston Lumber did not bring much in. This would be a ton of people coming in, happy people coming in and leaving, and they'll provide massage therapy, physical therapy, I think, and products that are available. So that's why I'm very happy about him being a potential tenant.
Can you speak a little bit, in a little bit more detail, about your efforts to find other retailers for that location, and whether you've worked with staff from the City of Evanston, the Economic Development staff or otherwise, and staff from the Main Dumpster Street Mile Association? Can you just speak to a little bit more about what your efforts have been and what sort of interests you've had or not had?
So we have talked with Paul Zamstek, I don't know if I'm pronouncing his name correctly. He has presented our situation to the Economic Development. He, also the Evanston Chamber of Commerce. We have talked to Karen Godzic, Catherine Godzic with the Main Dumpster Mile about getting potential clients. We also, I personally have made phone calls to many potential businesses that I thought would be vibrant and hope to bring into the area. In Chicago, there's many sweet shops that are, I've even called food stuffs, I thought maybe an urban grocery store would work. You know, we've had, we did have some people look at it, we even had a dance studio look at it. The issue is the structure has poles in the way of dancing, you know, not pole dancing, we don't want that. So maybe that's what I should look into, I don't know. So I, you know, it's so hard, because we love all our fellow retailers, so this is kind of, I don't want to get emotional. I'm sorry, but, and I don't want anyone to be upset. And that's what's so hard, because it's like our family is trying to find someone to take that space. And I just met Sean, and he just seems like a really great addition to our neighborhood. So that's why I'm hoping that you'll consider it. Anyway, sorry.
Thank you. Hi.
Good evening. My name is Ted Perez. I'm an Evanston resident since 1999. I live on 1231 Asbury Avenue. I'm a colleague of Sean Curry, as well as one of the co-founders at Sketchbook Brewing. I'm also one of his patients. I live and work in Evanston, and so being my chiropractor, it's been, first and foremost, to make sure that my care is taken care of and proper. In fact, at my current job, he suggested getting a work, a sit-stand desk, and so that was one of his great, you know, helps for me as an individual. I'm a, you know, customer of all the businesses there, except for maybe the nail salon and the laundromat. I haven't been there, but Squeeze Box and Vogue, I've been to all of them, DOC. So I, you know, if I come early to an appointment, I'm walking around, you know, it's, there's, there, I'm looking for something to do during that time. I think there was another gentleman here who, so there was a Starbucks right by his office, and I would wait there until my appointment was ready. Or after that, you know, to kind of sort of time my departure with the train, I would wait there as well. So the Metro's on schedule, the Purple Line comes there all the time. So there, there's a break between when I'm getting to my appointment and when I'm leaving. And so there's certainly an opportunity to walk up and down the street. I've been to Subway, and, you know, Cooney, and all those places. So I'm in support of the business. It would ensure that I'm focusing more on my chiropractic care, because I'm in the neighborhood more. But again, he's, he's a stand-up individual, and certainly, first and foremost, is the care of his patients. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And last, but not least.
I don't want to be last. Okay. Hi, my name is Amy Wilkinson. I live at 1630 Madison, and I'm also associated with Sketchbook. I manage the temp room. So I've been working with Sean, we were friends long before the brewery. As far as Sketchbook, he has worked with us as a founder. A couple points, I mostly agree with people, I'm very much in support of his business. The number of people who come to Sketchbook right before or right after their dental appointment next door is ridiculous. Like, I'm there all the time. I see people come over with their little bags, so it definitely is a thing. People come into town for a medical appointment and they stay. I wanted to just make a couple points. As far as being a serious business, I know, and I will push him to be an active member of the Main Dumpster Mile, right? Like, he will have to participate in the events, and the cookie giveaway, and the warm bevy walks, and be open to the evening events, and the art shows, and everything that go into being an active part of this business community. I am sure he knows that, and that this is part of being in this community, and using your business to enhance the business of everyone else and extend the community. I think that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Dr. Curry, would you have an opportunity to come up and rebut any of the comments that you've heard?
One of the things that, in envisioning this business, the name "family" is in there on purpose. Part of my mission statement is that it's hard to be in a family. It's hard to take care of your family if you're not well. That's the businesses on the block, as well as clients coming into my office. As somebody who's working downtown and lives here, I have referred hundreds of my patients up to this street. I encourage people to come up to the Custer Street Art Fair. I encourage people to come up to Diane's Wine Goddess, La Princesa, Eric Young. I chatted with him about it, he's like, "Bring people in the area, great." One of the things that, in talking tonight, found out that Athletico didn't have to go through this process, the new urgent care center has not had to go through this process. I was looking to see if there are places on Sherman and Chicago Avenue if they had to go through this process, and I was told everywhere in that whole Main Dumpster, Chicago, has to go through this process, but they haven't. I want this street, because I live off of it, I want it to be successful. I've been in this neighborhood for 11 years, I've seen a lot of businesses go, and there are businesses my kids really like going to. And I can't explain why Quake Collectibles is gone. I can't explain why the toy shop is gone. I can't explain then why they can't buy records, because we don't have a record player. At Squeeze Box, but Tim is really adamant about when my kids come in, they find an Archie comic book that they are infatuated with. Like, we walk up and down that street every single week. The numbers that I'm looking to bring into the neighborhood, and this is, when I become a part of a community and a part of a family, I'm sorry, but I'm in your family, and I'm looking to bring, at my best, right now I see about 200 people a week. I'm looking to calm down so my shoulders can live and be in this practice for the next 25 to 30 years. And I want to stay on Main Street, and it's just what Sean said, it's a vibrant, attractive neighborhood. I love the business owners there. I want to be part of that group, and I want them to succeed just as much. And I want to stay on Main Street, and it's just what Sean said, it's a vibrant, attractive neighborhood. I love the business owners there. I want to be part of that group, and I want them to succeed just as much. The only people I'm going to refer my patients to go around if I can't see them right away are the businesses right around my office. Because I don't want them walking away going to another chiropractic office four or five blocks down the way. I want them to be enticed to stay in that neighborhood. People are going to come in three times a week in the very beginning, depending on their care, two times a week. Once you start getting familiar with an area, that becomes your area. I've seen the businesses I currently work around succeed better and better because I'm sending patients over there, where they're like, "Hey, how's that food shop over there, that restaurant over there?" I'm like, "It's great, it's fantastic." And those people have become patients of mine. I want to be able to keep Main Street well in my office as well as around my office.
Can I, can I ask you another question?
Absolutely.
So the concerns that have been expressed here by the retailers who have put so much time and effort, and I'm, I'm familiar with it, into converting Main Street from, you know, a dead space to a much more vibrant retail center. They, they have a valid, a very valid point. One of the things that I am concerned about is your hours of operation. You're saying that you will be there on Saturdays from 10 to 12.
Power hours on Saturday, but that's going to expand as the, that's current, hours are going to expand as the patient base increases.
Okay. Well, that, that would be really important, that the hours, that that storefront be activated, align with the retail businesses, and of course, Saturdays is the big shopping day. So I would really hate to see that, that be a closed space all Saturday afternoon. That's one point that I would like to make. The second point that I would like to make is I would really like to see the retail component expanded. If it is nothing but a reception desk with, you know, a few, you know, I, I know that there are things that, that can be made available, you know, specialized massagers and, and specialized pillows that would help with, you know, the alignment of the spine. I'd love to see you sell stand-up desks and, you know, exhibit them in the front window. So I think that there are companion retail components that I would like to see made a part of this business, to speak to all of the work that went into creating the overlay district from Main Street so that it would be a retail, a retail area. So, you know, I would, I would like to make a recommendation to city council, because we are only a recommending body here, that they condition your approval on an expansion of the retail component, and I understand initially you're the sole employee, and I can't make you work six days a week.
Somebody already is, so...
You would, you would need to chiropractor really badly if you did that. But, but I do think that in, in relatively short order, the hours of operation have to align with the retail businesses. And again, an expansion of the retail in the front of your store would, would go a long way to help this be that kind of hybrid business that is both service, community-oriented, and still aligns with the retail overlay district.
Completely understand that. This tentative drawing was done by myself, and it was to be able to comply into the application.
Sure.
Friday, I met with a design and architect, and he has this picture, and he goes, "You're going to lose one room, and you're going to have to expand your, the what you draw up for your waiting area," which is great because that allows me to put in more product in the front.
Right.
So most of the, what you see besides the massage room and the exam room in the back are all half-walls. And so the full walls are going to be dedicated retail supplements in the back, or around the therapy areas are going to be all retail in there, mostly supplements are going to be in the front so people can see that. I've thought about marketing myself, and, you know, patient appreciation days, right with Small Business Saturday, that becomes Patient Appreciation Day, you bring your friends and your family over, new clients, consultation exams there, but you're bringing in, people are getting free, that day is all completely free adjustments, just adjustments only, but bringing into the celebrations going on. Dinner with Doc is one of my other things where I go and get to present and have patients talk, and it's, I need the restaurants around to be able to do that. And so I've already talked to the restaurant owners in regards to that component of it and bringing people into their space. So I've been thinking about this, as to how it could be more of a retail, and with losing one of the massage rooms, it allows me to expand that waiting area because when I thought about, you know, eight to 10 people a hour, there's only going to be enough room right in that drawing for four seats in the front, and I need a bigger space. And so that's going to allow me to have more retail up in the front. And it's hard to envision, it's hard for the rest of the retailers to envision what's already going on in my head. It's hard for me to envision what's going on because I have to knock a lot of things down in order to build it out.
Right. Well, and I would suggest that when you present to city council, that you translate what's going on in your head to, you know, to plan that, that details.
I'm hoping by the end of this week I have a design from the design and architects that I can have and add to this.
And I think that that would go a long way to assure your fellow businesses on Main Street that the space is not going to be a medical office, but, but more of a community wellness center with true retail component.
Absolutely.
I have a couple questions for you, Dr. Curry. I just want you to say again, how many people that you anticipate seeing a week?
I'm looking to see anywhere between, in the, within the first two years, probably about 80 to 120 people coming, 20 patient visits per week coming into that area.
And how many do you see roughly a day? How long are your appointments?
Patients are usually in my office for about 20 to 25 minutes per visit, but I can overlay, because of therapies and adjustments or different services, I can overlay timeframes on that. So that's what allows for people to be in there, multiple people to be in there at the same time.
And I heard you talk about supplements and different things for your retail, but could you break it down just a little bit more what you plan to sell in the front?
That's going to be tough. I have to figure out what the patient base needs. A lot of it is going to be, so if we go with what we currently have in our office, a lot of it is immune support, multivitamins, probiotics, fish oils, but there's also specific, you know, vitamins and nutrients in regards to what people are deficient based on how they're presenting into their case. A lot of it is bands, straps, supports, pillows, home care for pain management, that's going to be a bigger, a bigger component, the more high-ticket prices or items that are going to be in the office are going to be what that comprised of. The, you know, lines for children as well as for adults, as well as for geriatrics, it's going to be full spectrum for regards to what there's, so there's going to be three or four different types of multivitamins that are out there because they're not going to be the same for each, each age base. I'm sorry, there's a second question that you had asked in regards to...
No, I just wanted to know what type of retail things, and would that be a draw from somebody walking past? I'm just curious.
So, so say that somebody, so right now, when I went into the, I was trying to introduce myself to as many of the business, I saw that the optometrist has a few of the supplements that I would have, and on her shelf, and so say she's closed, and somebody's walking by and sees that bottle from the window, they can pop in and say, "Hey, listen, you know, the optometrist is on the way, I get that Natural D HIST, I usually use that, I'm out, do you mind if I buy it here?" Yes. Point of sale right there in the retail goes right, right to that person. They don't have to be a patient of mine, they can come in, they can buy supplements as they see them that they're walking by. There's, I went into the wellness center, and there, when I was looking at their space, I was pretty amazed that it seems that it's about 10% or maybe 15% of their entire space is dedicated to retail. It's a small display case over in the window, and then a set of oils. But she's an acupuncturist, and a lot of my patients who are seeing me in the city do acupuncture through a person in my office. I don't do that, and so I need to refer somebody to that thing. So those patients are immediately upon acupuncture are going to be referred down to Fine Fettle for that service because it's something that I recommend to my patients, but I can't supply it for them. So there's a lot of essential oils that she's doing, that's also something that's going to be incorporated into my practice, too.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Dr. Curry before we close the record? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, the zoning board of appeals makes a recommendation to city council, which is the determining body for this case. Because you are in an overlay district, we will have to read the standards for a special use. I'm going to read them as staff wrote them.
The 11th?
Yes.
Aren't we going to have discussion?
I thought we had our discussion.
No, I thought, I closed the record, but I'd like to have some discussion among us before we go through the, before we go through that.
A couple thoughts. I love Main Street. I think it's really a vibrant use. I really admire some of the new tenants that you've brought in. I look forward to the new coffee shop coming in. I think it's a really strategic time in that area. The city's investing in infrastructure in that area from Hinman to Maple. I think with the redevelopment of Robert Crown, that there's opportunities for that corridor to continue to grow as it, as more traffic comes into the Robert Crown corridor. So I really like that area. I've made a point of learning who are, you know, the new uses. I was recently in the new bookstore. So I, I really, I think it's a really great area. I do think the gentleman's point in differentiating between a professional office and a medical office rings true to me in terms of, you know, the type of traffic that you're going to see at that space. I do think that the face of retail continues to change and that that's something as a community, as we consider our different corridors and the position that they have in the community that we have to continue to grapple with how we keep these corridors active, given the changing face of retail. I mean, Davis Street, we now have a lot of, you know, small storefront gyms that, you know, five, seven, eight years ago, you know, we wouldn't have seen. So that's something that we're going to have to continue to consider. I have a couple questions for staff. One of the questions that one of our speakers spoke of is whether, if Dr. Curry, if there was a special use that was allowed for Dr. Curry to operate here on this, in this space, if his business for some reason did not continue there, the special use is, is specific to that user, right, and would not continue going forward? Is that correct, Melissa?
Yes and no. If Dr. Curry were to sell his exact specific practice to someone else and it was just a change, a change in ownership, then the special use would carry over to the, the new owner. If Dr. Curry ceased to operate there and a different medical office wanted to locate there, it would be required to obtain a substitution of special use, which is an administrative process approved by the zoning administrator with notices that go out to neighbors and neighbors may comment. If the medical office ceases to operate for one year, then any new medical office would have to go through a completely new special use process. And if it were any other use, it would, that, it would be either the permitted use or special use process.
Okay, that's clear. And why, can you answer why Athletico would not have had to gone through a similar process? Are they not covered by the same retail overlay?
I, I'm not familiar with Athletico, I don't know if they were before the special, before the overlay district, that's only about four years old.
Well, they came into the main dumpster, the main, the new main building, right?
Two months ago.
Yeah.
There, oh, um...
I believe they were classified by staff as a retail service establishment, not a medical office establishment.
Correct. Because they have a large component that does not have to be by, done by a medical doctor or with a prescription.
Okay. I think, you know, I'll go back to my statement that, you know, retail is changing, and the types of uses that we're getting in these quarters will continue to change, and I think to the extent that we can encourage uses to be open to the street, have a, have an attractive storefront, be appealing to the shoppers that are there, and continue to actively work to bring, you know, bring, whether the, people are coming there initially as a patient or a shopper, it's bringing people to that area that I do believe that there's crossover capabilities with, you know, Wine Goddess, with the coffee shop, with the bookstore. So in my mind, though, it may not be a clear retail use, but I love a flower store there, sure, I'd love a flower store there. But I also think, you know, this is a use that will bring value to the corridor.
Anybody else want to comment?
Yeah, I have some comments. So I was listening to everybody, and I have to tell that, like somebody said here, I was also on the fence about this project. Everybody would like to see Main Street more and more vibrant. At the end of the day, I would support the project, but I have certain recommendations. First, I would love to see more retail and more specific retail, attractive retail. So it is a kind of a, let's say, just words at the moment, but you should prove, especially to the city council, that you can provide retail services that are tempting over there. And they may be fully connected to your practice, they may be a little bit broader spectrum of retail services. The second thing, I think, and again, it was part of some of the people that said certain things, you should really convince the city council that you will be a participant in the life of this street, like what you said and some other people said. You should participate in the life of the street with anything that you can provide for the, for the neighborhoods, for the retail neighborhood. And the third thing, I am sorry to be always critical, but I don't like what you provide here to us. You would have saved your time and you would have convinced us more if you had a better presentation. This is, this is not a good presentation. You would have a better spacing of everything, and you would convince everyone that you think really about a really nice space over there. It's a criticism, and I have provided it to many others, but I want this voice to be heard. We want this city to be beautiful and vibrant, and it starts from this sketch, and it's not good enough. So don't take me wrong, I wish you luck, and I will support it.
I'm just going to echo that, the, what I have already said, and that is, I agree with everything that Carol has said, and I think that what I would suggest with my colleagues here is that we recommend to city council that they approve your special use contingent upon a presentation of a well-drawn plan for what the business will look like and for an expanded retail component. Frankly, vitamins and supplements are not very sexy. I would really like to see something that is alluring in the front window. I think that that's what the retailers here are looking for as well. And then once more, as, I want your business to succeed, but, you know, I know it's taken the coffee shop quite a, a long time to get up and operating. You should have the time to get your business on its feet. But that said, I would also like to make our recommendation to city council contingent upon your open hours aligning with the retail hours in the neighborhood. And everybody takes a day, two days off. I know Vera gives Sunday and Monday, you know, we're not, can't dictate, but, but more or less to align with the retail hours so that with your other people that you have coming in, you know, maybe they can maintain the hours that you're not maintaining just so that it's an activated business.
As for my comments, I also agree with Carol, and I agree with Mary. However, I do want to see you do something with the retail for a person that's not a chiropractic visitor like myself. I'd like to be able to walk into your store and benefit as well. There are other people like me in Evanston, and there, there should be something there that would draw everybody in. I'm looking forward to the 50 to 100 people extra that should be coming up to visit your store. I think they will visit the other stores in the community, and I do think that you, if you're, I hear your sincerity when you talk about being a part of this community and opening up. If you're going to open up the hours that Mary has talked about, I'm sure that you could do some other community-based activities in the hours that you're not doing chiropractor. Not just dinner with the doctor at the restaurant, but something at your facility that would draw other people in. So I'm looking forward to your business being there, and I support it.
Okay.
We're ready for the standards. All right. Okay, the ZB, for the ZBA to recommend that the city council grant a special use, we must find that the proposed special use A is one of the listed special uses for the zoning district in which the property lies. Yes, in section 61517-5. If anybody disagrees with me, please... If anybody disagrees with me, please speak up. B, complies with the purposes and the policies of the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. Yes, because the storefront will appear active and the use will increase patronage of the business district. C, does not cause a negative cumulative effect in combination with existing special uses or as a category of land use. Yes, because there is not an overabundance of similar ground for office uses in the business district. D, does not...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Did you finish?
For C, yes.
Okay. No, yes, I, I just...
I just wanted to say that I would agree with that contingent on an expansion of retail space. Otherwise, I do think that it can have a negative impact on the other businesses.
I agree. I think that should be one of our conditions. D, does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. Yes, the use will occupy an otherwise vacant storefront and will encourage patronage of existing businesses in the neighborhood. E, is adequately served by public facilities and services. Yes, the building is existing. F, does not cause undue traffic congestion. Yes, employees will walk to work, take public transportation, or utilize the one dedicated onsite parking space, and customers will be encouraged to take public transportation since the Main Street, CTA, and metro stations are nearby. G, preserves significant historical and architectural resources. Yes, there are no modifications to the exterior of the building proposed other than signage. H, preserves significant natural and environmental features. That's not applicable. And I, complies with all other applicable, applicable regulations. Yes. Would somebody like to make the motion? With the standing conditions. I've closed the record, sir. I don't think we can. Let's take our vote.
I will, I move that in the case of 18ZMJV-0097, with regard to 705 Main Street, that ZBA recommend that city council approve the special use contingent upon a well-designed plan for the appearance and design of the space with an expansion of retail, and within a reasonable period of time, that the business hours align with the retail businesses in the Main Street overlay district. And we look forward to your being there. I'm sorry.
Any other conditions?
And that it be developed in compliance with testimony and documents as presented here this evening.
Well, actually, that it be, that it be completed in compliance, in accordance with the revised plans that you will present to city, to city council.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We recommend to city council for your special use permit. Okay. Has everybody on the board had an opportunity to look at next year's schedule? Is everybody in, together with that schedule?
Sure.
No, you haven't looked at it. It'll change.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll change. Okay. Can somebody propose we pass it?
Sure. I, I vote that we pass the schedule for...
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a happy holiday, everybody. Thanks for coming.